Back to specific zoning districts. So at this time, this is how this was done. So we have the different zoning districts within the development. And in the bottom-left corner, you see the B3 zoning for this specific property. Along with that, PUD overlay are specific requirements for the PUD that the applicant agreed to. And within those requirements, it was outlined the types of signs that would be permitted within the development. Those types of signs include the wall signs for the buildings, as far as the maximum allowed square footage, the ground signs that are permitted throughout the site, and then any other type of signage that would be addressed. And that is still the way that we do it today. We have, whenever we have a PUD, we also outline the allowed signage that would be permitted within the development as well. So as you can see by this plan, the development did not end up being built as it's shown here. And in 1989, I believe it was, we had a modification, oh no, it was 1993. So modification 1093, modification 10, oop, a little delayed here. 1093 removed eighty-seven and a half of the acres from the PUD and left 25.8. So all of the property that's now wide out to the east was removed, and it's now in a separate PUD. And now the 25 acres is simply these buildings, which is currently now the Best Buy, which is furthest to the north, Olive Garden, McDonald's, a multifamily building, Friday's, then the multifamily building at the bottom where the former Pier One was, and then you have Buffalo Wild Wings. This proposal is for the building where the Pier One formerly was, at that bottom-left corner. So within modification 1093, PUD 8818, we had new sign requirements that were outlined for the PUD. And those sign requirements, which were included in your packet, outlined the maximum size of the signs that would be permitted for the wall, wall signs for the outlots, as well as for the larger department stores, as well as the pylon signs, the two larger signs, and then, as well as the, which I didn't put on here, the smaller outlaw identification signs that were allowed along the Ring Road. So if you go down through the Ring Road, you'll see each of the outlots has a small five-foot sign identifying their specific site. So the pylon sign requirements, the two large ground sign requirements, the signs that were permitted for the PUD specifically, were the two signs, one to be located at the intersection of Interstate 675 and North Fairfield, and then the one to be located at the entrance to the development. The 675 one was to be 30 feet tall, the development entrance sign was to be 40 feet tall, both of them were allowed to be 164 square feet per side. And both of those signs were constructed. So these are the photos that we took recently of both of those signs. The one on the right, the one on the right is the one adjacent to Interstate 675, which is over here. And then this is the entrance sign along North Fairfield Road. So the applicant is proposing to construct this 55-foot-tall sign. He is correct in that when it was calculated, we did calculate the size from top to bottom, because generally what we do is whenever we have any type of letter copy, we draw a rectangle around the entire sign and calculate it as such. And so the proposed sign does exceed the maximum sign height by 15 feet. So the maximum height that was permitted for this development was 40 feet, and this one is 55 feet tall. And then also, it does obviously exceed the maximum size, square footage size that was permitted within the PUD. We did take a look, this is actually a rendering of the existing sign that they have now. This is someone that's six feet tall, and then this is the sign that they're proposing for the site. And there are just a couple of other signs down along North Fairfield Road. This is the adjacent shopping center, the sign is 30 feet tall. And then these, we just did a couple of years ago with the Mall at Fairfield Commons, they wanted to redo their signage. And as you can see on theirs, they do have some electronic variable message signing on this one. They didn't put it on the other one, they just wanted to put it on one. But again, the sign is 30 feet tall as well. So generally, most of the signs along North Fairfield Road are 30 feet tall. And we feel that this sign is not consistent with those signs, as well as not meeting the requirements that were specifically stated in PUD 8818 mod 1093. So staff is recommending disapproval in the attached motion. Should City Council choose to approve this case, there is an additional motion with some conditions of approval. And I can answer any questions you have following the public hearing.
All right, thank you very much. Like, this is a public hearing this evening. Is there anyone present that would like to address this issue? So please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public input. And it is council time. And... Mr.?
Not my mic. Nobody can hear me. Thank you. You know, to, I'm gonna start off by saying Lamar has been a good partner to Beaver Creek. I mean, it's, the signs that you do have, they're there for, like you said, for public use, if it actually is an emergency. They're well-built. So there's no issue, in my mind, with the company, as far as Lamar. We're trying to address tonight whether or not this sign falls within the PUD requirements. And that's the number-one issue that we're here to discuss. So if anyone on council wishes to add any comment to that, I would appreciate it. You're just about ready.
I'll start. I mean, there's a lot to digest here, and there's a million pieces of paper to even start to go through.
And that may be the other alternative, Mr. Bales, is that we not move, try to make a decision tonight. But that's up to you.
Yeah, I was gonna say, based upon the number of exhibits, too, council certainly would not be out of place, in my opinion, to, the African has quite an issue, but certainly to listen to testimony, take it under advisement, and then make a determination.
That's where I was coming from.
Since that is a lot that you're not gonna review at this point, I know. It's not human involvement.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's quite all right. Sandra, let's talk about that PUD 8818.
Yes.
For a second.
Sure.
If the developer wanted to build a third pylon sign there, could he do so?
He wouldn't be able to just build the pylon sign. He'd have to come to us. We would more than likely go through Planning Commission and City Council, or just Planning Commission, for a modification. However, staff more than likely wouldn't recommend approval of a third pylon sign either. They have two pylon signs, if you look at other developments, and the amount of signage that they have, it's already consistent with the amount of signage that we see in other developments of this scale.
Yeah, I guess that was my question, is that the conditions of the PUD have been met.
Correct.
And this is inconsistent with the existing PUD.
That is correct.
Okay.
Just to add to that, also, that third, that third pylon sign has a limitation, so that would be the issue. It is 30 feet.
Right, that was a hypothetical.
Yeah, there is no third pylon.
We're not here to consider that, but I just, based upon the PUD, it is 30 feet. Correct.
Well, there is no third pylon sign, so there is no anything at this point.
Sure. That's what it was.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have any comments at this point in time, further than that, right now.
Mr. Durant, or anything you'd like to add?
Please, Mayor. I'd like to likewise thank Lamar for their great work in Beaver Creek and for the application. I go running through this area a lot, so I've got a good bird's-eye view oftentimes. I think three questions. Two are fairly simple, I think. What's the distance from the sidewalk?
It is going to be, it is proposed to be five feet back from the right-of-way there, which I believe the sidewalk is very close to the right-of-way. So about five feet back.
Okay. Because it's in something of a gully, like it drops down before you get to the old Pier One.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So the 55 feet...
Is fairly close to the edge of the road there.
Sure. Okay. Any tree removal expected in and around that area?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Just looking at their site plan, it doesn't appear that they were planning on removing any trees. I don't think there are any substantial trees in that area anyway.
Sure. I think personally, I'd like some time to digest the document. Thank you for the presentation to, I like to read, I like to read over things.
Sure.
I have some questions on 158.159 that I may ask Mr. McHugh at some point. But, thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, thank you. We're talking a lot about the measurement of the sign. Is there somewhere in our code that says how we're supposed to measure the signs, or how they need to be measured uniformly?
Yeah, I think our sign code, when it talks about sign area, it says that we draw a rectangle around the entire copy area of the sign to calculate sign size.
Oh, and that's in our code?
And that's in our code. In the definition section of sign area, it tells you that that's how you calculate.
Okay. Yeah, I, thank you. I agree. I think we need some more time to kind of go over some of the materials presented. But that's it for now. I may have some questions later, though. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Swart.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions at this time. I concur with my fellow council members. This is a lot of material, and I would prefer to have the opportunity to actually read through it, to come to a more informed decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Curran.
Same, Your Honor. I think we need the time to be able to absorb this at the red night. I don't think that we'd be prepared to act on anything tonight.
Vice Mayor Adams.
I concur. I wasn't ready for this manual to look at, and I certainly can't look at it right here, because it's trying to listen to people talk and read that, it just doesn't work. So I think I would like to suggest we put it off to another meeting to make the decision.
And I'd just like to add one thing. We do appreciate the exhibits that Lamar provided, and the information that is in here, and it'll just take a little bit to digest, so thank you. Last call, anything? Do I hear a motion to table?
So move, Your Honor.
Before you table, can I just make, just to help clarify, or not clarify, but focus on the issues?
Please.
I'd like to suggest to you that we are building an electronic changeable billboard, not a pylon. And the reason it's important is that billboards don't, they don't work like pylons. You know, a pylon sits there, and you list your stores that are in your shopping area on it. So naturally, they don't have to be as large, they put limitations on them, all you have are slats with stores' names in it. This billboard, electronic billboard, is presenting messaging across the thing, and it won't work as a pylon. And that's why your code has a whole separate section for electronic changeable billboards. And we have not exceeded the number of billboards allowed under 158.159. It allows for four electronic changeable billboards like this in all of Beaver Creek. You can only have four of them, and it's right in that section. And so we are within that section, and we are within all the dimension requirements. The only other thing, if you look at your zoning code, the ordinances, which is Exhibit Seven, and as you get, unfortunately, these aren't paged, but if you go to the very last three pages, that's Appendix C, I'm sorry, the last two pages, that's Appendix C to your ordinances, and you will see in there that they actually have diagrams of how you measure the face on these billboards. And it is the signed area that's actually where the message is. With all respect, it's not the whole outer dimension. And obviously, if you approve this, and there are some conditions, there are things that you want, and this isn't the first time we've worked with Beaver Creek on getting a billboard approved and in building one. If you don't like the "Welcome to Beaver Creek" there, I can't imagine it, but it could be, obviously, that could be taken off. But there are certain parameters that the billboard won't work. If we don't have the height that it's at, I mean, this was designed for this area, this space. And so it really, it's not a pylon, and need to look at it.
All right, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right.
Chair also, I think Mr. Moore, I believe Mr. Moore, who's a engineer, was also going to, you know, ask a major highway issue.
If there's a question, not that I can address it. Okay. Well, if there is, you should be...
Well, at this point in time, at this point in time, though, if we're gonna, if we choose to table this, I think we can, we can address those things separately. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to table...
PC 21 dash four.
Second.
Is this for a specific amount of time, or is this till the next regularly scheduled meeting?
I would move to table PC 21 dash four until the next regularly scheduled meeting.
No, regular meeting, right. All right, so I have a motion, is that second, still stand? I have a motion and a second to table PC 21 dash four until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which is at the end of the month. And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all. All right, next on the agenda is Ordinance 21 dash 16.
Ordinance number 21 dash 16, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current section 76 dot 04A, prohibited standing or parking places of the codified ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek, and enacting a new section 76 dot 04A, prohibited standing or parking places to the codified ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. Oh, geez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I believe this is our second reading, is that correct?
It is.
Okay. We did have some changes to the very first reading that we had, and basically, this code, 76.04A, prohibited standing or parking places of the codified ordinances of the City of Beaver Creek, does not prohibit parking a vehicle on the roadway in front of or near a U.S. Postal Service mailbox. And as a result, vehicles parked in front of or near mailboxes have prevented mail delivery for some citizens. This new proposed section of 76.04A prohibits a vehicle from parking on the roadway in front of or within 10 feet of either side of a mailbox. And that is the only change we made to that. We did remove another section of that. So basically, as it is written, in front of or within 10 feet of either side of a mailbox, and we are recommending adoption of this ordinance.
All right, thank you very much. And these minor changes that were made had to deal with the distance, description of the distance.
Correct.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
More clarifying than anything, right?
Right.
Yes.
Any comments? I'm not sure who sponsored this, but if you remember, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Your Honor, that we move Ordinance 21 16, repealing codified ordinance 76.04A, and enacting 76.04, prohibit standing or parking places.
Second? I have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 21 dash 16. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Ordinance 21 dash 17.
Ordinance number 21 dash 17, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current Chapter 97, Trees, Weeds, and Shrubs of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Beaver Creek, and enacting a new Chapter 97, Trees, Weeds, and Shrubs to the Codified Ordnances of the City of Beaver Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Again, this is an ordinance to repeal Chapter 97, the trees, weeds, and shrubs, and replace it with new language. This proposed language, there's some minor changes in terms of requiring a permit for, or removal of the requirement of a permit to prune or trim any trees. It also, it changed the period of compliance from 30 days to 15 days, and we also wanted to point out that, you know, weeds and shrubs and overgrown brush and the like, that it's not really applicable in established wooded areas, in wooded areas, because we can't really expect people to maintain bushes inside of a woods. I mean, otherwise, we'd be cutting down all the woods in Beaver Creek. We also clarified utilities before, it just said "public utilities," and any trees that were interfering with public utilities, and we wanted to clarify that and make sure it was, it solidified that it was city-owned public utility. So it didn't cover all public utilities from every public utility company out there. But this was a joint effort between, the Tree Advisory Committee looked at these regulations, Zach down in public service, along with Mr. Thonero down in public service, and our Engineering Department, as well as the Planning and Development Department. So I wanted to thank them and the Tree Advisory Board for their guidance on this. And planning and development, along with the other departments do recommend approval of this request, and be happy to answer any questions following the public hearing.
Thank you. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so it is a public hearing. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address this application? Seeing none, we will close the public input. Comments, council? Just jump in, please. You do.
Got a couple. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, please.
And thank you, Mr. Burkett, for your great work on this. I think the first question is simply procedural on 97 dot 05E. The Tree Advisory Board may review, so what does that look like? Do they get copies and then have the option each time to make recommendations?
Yeah, we just, we wanted to make it a little bit softer, so that there's no requirement, and didn't hold up processes on projects, especially if they didn't really have, they weren't applicable in any way. So it still allows them the opportunity to review and advise, but it doesn't necessarily hold up projects, which could, it could be how it could be interpreted.
Absolutely, yeah. I think this will speed up the process, so thanks for that. 97 dot 12, overgrown hedges and shrubbery. I know elsewhere in our code, we have a definition, a rough definition of overgrown, but I'm wondering if we need more specific language and what constitutes overgrown. Roughly, maybe 10% of my conversation with residents pertains to, you know, this tree is overgrown, there's that issue. I'm just wondering if we need to clarify, maybe I'll throw that open to council if I'm off-base, I'll withdraw.
Yeah, I mean, we just, we're going with the generic term, so it gives some flexibility in the eyes of the code enforcement officer on what, where it's obviously overgrown, if you've got a bush and there's branches that are, you know, growing into the eaves or into the, across windows or doors, and creating a real dangerous situation or blight situation. So I guess some person's overgrown is another person's art, so we don't want to, we don't want to say that a bush can't be over a certain height or a certain square footage, but, you know, it's kind of, you know it when you see it, kind of thing.
Absolutely.
On purpose. On purpose.
Maybe that word "blight" could be something to think about, too. I mean, it is a, I mean, I understand what you're trying to do, but it's something that, you know, is judgmental. All right. Anyone else?
So similar, similar to that same point, I was looking at the wooded area definition, and we don't really have a definition of what is a wooded area, so obviously, subject to interpretation, not really a question, I guess, just something to...
Yeah, I mean, again, it's just one of those, you know if it's a wooded area, or if it's not, when you see it. It's hard to really define it specifically, and we don't want to say anything over eight feet by eight feet, or anything like that, because it gets to the point where someone's just gonna let weeds grow in a seven-by-seven, or something like, or, you know, nine-by-nine area, and say, "Well, this is my wooded area," and then they'll let poison ivy go crazy in the middle of their front lawn and call. So we really want to have the flexibility to say, "This is a wooded area," or "This is not a wooded area," just based on reason and logic when you're out there looking at the situation.
We've got a house down our street, the bushes are growing over the gutter.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to give us that address, we'll certainly be happy to send the code enforcement officer out there.
Looks like a treehouse.
Yeah, I mean, that's the kind of situations we're trying to avoid.
Crazy.
And real quickly, can you talk, just real briefly, about the permit, when you talk about trees? You're talking about those in the right-of-way?
There was a, let me get back to that section. Before, the permit said that, well, the language in 97 03 said, "Permits shall be obtained for the pruning, trimming, or cutting down of trees in public right-of-way." And we didn't want to get to a situation where somebody wants, there's obviously a dead branch that's hanging down, that we create a situation where they're discouraged from, you know, pruning or trimming the tree when it needed it. Whereas, if they want to cut the whole tree down, of course, we want to know about that and be a part of that process, but to, you know, just to maintain a tree in the right-of-way, we wanted to eliminate that requirement.
Okay. And it's still, it's still up in the air as to, or it's not up in the air, but it's still up for discussion as to who owns who, I mean, who's responsible for those trees. I mean, we've had this discussion before, and anyway, we'll get there when we need to. All right, any other comment on this?
Are there any heights requirements on hedges at all?
No, I mean, there's no, there's no specific limitations. I guess if it becomes overgrown and unsightly.
Well, I mean, you could take care of it, you could actually have a fence all the way around your yard.
Well, for hedges and shrubs that are used, you know, there is a requirement, I think it's 48, 42 inches if it's along the right-of-way, being used.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
You have to set it back if it's more than that, but, so there is that requirement for the purposes of natural fencing.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a motion to move this to the second reading.
Motion to move Ordinance 21 dash 17 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move Ordinance 21 dash 17 on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 21 dash 34.
Resolution number 21 dash 34, a resolution approving a petition for special assessments for special energy improvement projects, and a supplemental plan for public improvements under a higher revised code, Chapter 171-0, and declaring the necessity of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements described in the plan for public improvements in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I'm going to have Mr. McHugh present this, but I wanted to let council know that there's three parts to this. There is the resolution, which she just read, and we'll have council vote on each entity, but it's kind of hard, it's all one thing. So we're going to kind of talk about the PACE project, and what each of these individual, there's a resolution, and there's two ordinances, and it's easier to talk about it in the full scope, and then tell you what each thing you're voting on. So if you allow us to talk about it in broader scale than just the resolution, and then we'll bring it back down to the individual things of what council would be considering tonight, if that's good with you guys.
Please.
Mr. McHugh?
Okay. If I may, council, let me address all these at one time, that way I think it might be a little more efficient than doing one part, because it's a whole package. First off, you have in your packet the PACE equity, the calculations, that's one of the requirements of law. You have to do a calculation to determine that there is some energy efficiency by doing this.
I mean, that is the whole purpose of this PACE, or E Said, is to establish a, uh, a process, uh, whereby there is an incentive to developers to pay the additional cost for energy-efficient equipment or energy-efficient designs of certain portions, but then it has to be certified by, uh, qualified engineers, and that is, that is the point of this. It was, we also had a, a PACE board meeting last week, uh, at which point the, the board approved, approved this process and what was being proposed, which then, at that point, moved to council. So what you have is, it is a way to provide financing for, uh, energy efficiency that is less expensive, you, they get a better interest rate, um, and it effectively is, hate to call it, but it's effectively a legal fiction. And what I mean by that, of the about four and a half million dollars in energy efficiency, um, it is, while it appears that the city is heavily involved in this transaction, and there's certain requirements that we are, um, the city has, um, and I've got a number of spots, I think I counted eight spots in here, where there's no liability for debt, the city has no obligation, this is going to be, we are simply, uh, the conduit by which, uh, public financing debt is then done by third parties, and this particular pace, the place, uh, PACE equity is the, the, the loan company. Uh, they are also the ones that did, uh, the, the pri, the last one we did, uh, the city did, so this is, it's a company we're familiar with. Uh, the other point I think is important, too, is that one of the requirements that the city has negotiated, that, uh, is in the documents are required, was that, uh, if not all, but a substantial portion of the city's costs will be paid ahead of time or paid with respect, so the city is not, you know, we're doing this as a service to developer, and so those will be part of the cost. The ultimate cost, I think, is, is, is gonna be substantially higher, but you've got a long-term debt, you have a number of closing costs, uh, and that's where this is coming from. What you have, though, is, um, we do have the, uh, once the PACE board approved it, you've got the petition, uh, to the petition, you have the resolution. With respect to the resolution, uh, is, uh, to approve the petition for assessments, okay? So there'll be special assessments, tax assessments, those tax assessments, then the city's involvement, and once, if should all this be approved, is the city will get the money from the county, the, the city will, then is under a legal contract to then pay the money to pay for debt. If there is a shortfall, again, this is the critical part, if there is a shortfall, the city has no obligation to make up the funding, this, they, we have no obligation to put any general funds or special funds or anything in to make it, so if the, if the tax revenue doesn't pay the debt, um, that is, that is, uh, going to be an obligation, and I would expect probably foreclosure and other suits between the financing company, PACE equity, and the developer. So you have both a resolution, then the next process is with any assessment, you have an ordinance to determine to proceed, uh, and declaring an emergency, again, this would all be on the twenty-seventh, and then finally, the third, uh, third document and ordinance is to actually levy it. So you, you've, it's basically, as with a sidewalk assessment, there's a resolution necessity to determine that there's a reason to do this, there's a ordinance to then proceed with it, there's an ordinance to levy. It's, it's much different in, in the sense of what we're doing, but it follows a very traditional path of assessments, and so that is the, that is the whole process here, but it, as the city manager stated, has to go through the process, you gotta do the resolution, then the ordinance, then, you know, and so we specifically set these up, to which attached are also a number of documents, um, which, you know, there's the cooperative agreement, um, and so if there's a special assessment agreement, of which the city is part of all these, but those are all a part of and referred to, again, they have limitations with respect to the city, so we are not, we are not responsible for the debt, uh, with respect to it, and if there's a, a failure to pay, again, it's between, really, the two principles in this, the finance company and the developer or owner of the project, so.
And if I may, uh, just to add two things, this is our third PACE project, uh, we have two PACE districts, if you wanna call it that, uh, the first one was the mall, uh, back in sixteen, when it was approved, and then we knew that we needed a different type of PACE, so this one falls under the citywide PACE, more or less, that we have, uh, so the one is just the scope of the mall, and then we widened a, a different PACE district to the citywide PACE, and so this will be the second project within the citywide PACE.
That was a hotel project, I believe.
Yeah, hotel project, and now this. Um, the only other thing I wanna clarify is the second reading, as you can assume with anything, when you have closing, closing, closing cost, all that, that's why the second reading, it's as an emergency, so there's not a thirty days, how they have to calculate. We wanted to have the second reading, so public input as needed, or questions as council, we didn't wanna shortcut that, but usually with anything with financing, you know, the numbers change every day, so the quicker it's, uh, locked in, that's why it's an emergency on the second reading, to clarify that.
Any questions?
No, it's a very good explanation of what the ordinances actually do, it really was, one of the.
Thank you.
It, uh, made things a little clearer than mud in my head, but it, no, it was good. Uh, any, uh, so we're addressing resolution twenty-one dash thirty-four currently, that's the one that's been read, and so any questions on that or, that resolution?
I, I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So in explaining the process, and I, I'm kind of looking at the process overall, Steve, in terms of manpower on the city, what type of manpower or what type of obligation do we have in moving that money from the assessment over to the other company, or maybe this is a better question for Pete?
A payment is, a payment is received in the finance department, and, uh, payment then is forwarded to the company.
Yeah, basically, it's a, it's a, it's us writing a check, for the most part, all the other, it comes at the same time of all the other property taxes, and so Bill's department just distributes into all the different funds, there is a PACE fund and that, that this money goes into, and just like with, you know, the city has, you know, our own debt, small debt, that we have, you know, we know the schedule and we simply send the check out, uh, so pretty.
Minimal.
Minimal, yes.
Okay. Um, and then, the second question I had is, while we aren't liable for any of that outstanding debt, or if any of that were to occur, would we be a party to that lawsuit because we are a go-between?
We should not be a party.
Okay.
No. Now, that being said, any, any lawsuit is, is, especially to, and lawyers know, people can name you in a lawsuit, whether we are a, a proper party, in my opinion, we would not be a proper party, but that doesn't ma, mean that someone doesn't name us.
Certainly, okay. Right, that's all the questions I had, thanks.
Oh, okay. Any other questions, like?
And PACE has been around for how long? I mean, not just this city, but?
Oh, many years now, this, it's, it's new to the, it's relatively new to the city, yes, probably close to twenty years, I suspect, yeah.
Most states now.
Now, is it the city's responsibility to levy that assessment, uh, there'll have to be a process for us to do that, or?
Yes, the city will levy it, yes.
So we do have more to do?
That's, that's, that's the third piece of legislation or second ordinance, that we actually have.
Yep, okay.
Really the author that does the work on that.
Yep. Alright, anything else on the resolution? Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I have moved resolution twenty-one thirty-four PACE for the city of Beaver Creek and Ashford of Beaver Creek LLC.
You move for approval? Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-one dash thirty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. So now the accompanying, first accompanying ordinance is ordinance twenty-one dash eighteen.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash eighteen, an ordinance determining to proceed with the acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation, cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Any further input? I think it was expla, it was all explained to us, but if anybody has any questions on this particular ordinance, please bring it up. This is an ordinance, so it also is eligible for public input, so if there anyone here this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public input. Alright, I'll either entertain a question or a motion.
I'll move to move ordinance twenty-one eighteen to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty-one dash eighteen onto the second reading. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is the, uh, ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash nineteen, an ordinance letting special assessments for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and improving certain public improvements in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, in cooperation with the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, authorizing and approving an emergency, or an energy project cooperative agreement by and among the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, Ashford of Beaver Creek LLC, and PACE Equity LLC, providing for the financing of those public improvements, authorizing and approving a special assessment agreement by and between the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, the county treasurer of Green County, Ohio, Ashford of Beaver Creek LLC, the Beaver Creek Energy Special Improvement District, and PACE Equity LLC regarding those special assessments and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Uh, any further input from staff? This is what I found interesting, Mr. McHugh, when you were describing it, is that it's, you know, it may be more complicated and it may, may be a lot more significant, but that's, this process is no different than cutting somebody's grass and putting the assessment on their taxes, so to speak, pretty much the same.
Right, so it, uh, okay.
Yeah, you know, this, it also goes through two thousand fifty-one.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying the, to be able to place the, the assessment on the property is the, uh, the similarity.
Yeah.
Alright, any discussion from council? Uh, did we go to public input on this one? I don't think we did. This is the first reading of an ordinance, so if there's anyone here that would like to address council on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public input. Any further comment on ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen?
Your Honor, I have moved twenty-one nineteen, uh, PACE for the city of Beaver Creek and Ashford of Beaver Creek, uh, this motion, the motion to move the, uh, ordinance to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance twenty-one dash nineteen onto the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Next is resolution twenty-one dash thirty-two.
Resolution number twenty-one dash thirty-two, a resolution to declare the necessity and intention to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other properties interests owned by the decedents of Frank C. Hubble with interest by others for the factory road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Mr. Marman?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor, members of city council, um, one of our capital improvement projects planned for twenty twenty-two is a, is an improvement along a factory road. Uh, it's essentially between the entrance to, uh, Nutter Park and the Creekside Trail. Um, the project's scope is to widen the road to three lanes, curb gutter, storm sewer, and a path along the west side of the road, and there's also some profile corrections, like, uh, you may know, when you get close to the Creekside Trail, there's a, there's a pretty good bump right there, we're gonna be smoothing that out and making sure all the lines aside are good. Uh, in order to construct that project, we had to acquire additional property rights from ten known property owners, and I'm happy to report to you that all known property owners we've been able to reach agreements with, where there's no actual people we'll have to go to court with to acquire land. Um, however, there is one additional property where we were unable to locate a, a clear title to the property, there's no known owner, so the only way for us to, to acquire clear title to that land for, for the roadway project is to use the appropriations process. Uh, this particular piece of property, uh, it's located in the vicinity of the Creekside Trail, and as you know, the, before the Creekside Trail, there, there was a railroad, uh, track in, in that area, there's a spur in the old railroad line where this is kind of a triangle in that old spur, where, again, there's no clear title to the property. Uh, in order to, uh, proceed with this, uh, there's two pieces of legislation, council will need to approve this resolution, and there's an ordinance that'll come immediately after this. Uh, and again, we would ask that, when you consider the ordinance, you consider approving as an emergency ordinance, because we have a deadline coming up with ODOT, and that'll help expedite the filing of the case. And with that, I'd be happy to answer, any questions?
Thank you. Any questions on the resolution? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash thirty-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution thirty-one, or twenty-one dash, I'm sorry, which one we had? Oh, twenty-one dash thirty-two. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. And the accompanying ordinance is ordinance twenty-one dash twenty.
Ordinance number twenty-one dash twenty, to appropriate certain real property interest owned by the decedents of Frank C. Hubble for the factory road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. And we've heard the explanation, any questions on the, oh, this is an order, sorry. Uh, anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on to council, any input? And do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-one twenty as an emergency?
Second.